I'd like to welcome everyone to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees work session. Today's March the 24th, 2015, and it is 4:30, 4:00 P.M. Mr. Vernon, can you do the roll off?
Yes, I can. Mr. Vernon?
Present.
Mr. Hamlin?
Present.
Mr. Farley?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
We have several items for discussion regarding action and discussions. And I'd like to first start with Mr. Hennigan. We wanted to discuss some action items.
Hi, Mr. Hennigan. First one is, I guess, potential action item. Joe, I'm referring to you on this. This is something Joe initially called my attention. It has to do with some concern with this House Bill 64, I think, on the budget bill. What I potentially attached to the budget bill is an item revising some existing language in the statutes. As I understand it, to sort of enforce or legislatively enforce what has been an existing practice on a fund being used for county agencies, specifically county water quality related agencies, a fund that they've always had access to, provide portions of their funding. And there's some concern that the state now burning that to deal with one specific problem rather than making available to all counties as it has. So while this item specifically, I don't think would apply to Springfield Township. It's more about kind of the trend of the state deciding where the money's going to go and how they're going to be used, rather than how it's been used in the past and spread across all of all agencies. Joe, that's how I understand it, and you obviously know about this.
The reason I asked him to put this on the agenda was I received a letter from Scott Huber, who's the chairman of the Hamlin County Soil and Water Conservation District. And Mike's right, traditionally there have been monies that, you know, taxpayer funds that gone to the state are now being diverted away from the soil and water conservation districts in a lot of the counties. And because of the EPA Phase Two regulations that are basically an unfunded mandate, a lot of the minimum control measures that all the local jurisdictions, including all the jurisdictions in Hamlin County are under a federal mandate to comply with. They were being paid for with some of these state funds. And the Hamlin County Soil and Water Conservation District was on behalf of the jurisdictions fulfilling those minimum control measures. And it has to do with public education and all that. And so now, according to the letter I got here, they'll be losing 36% of their total budget. And it has to do with some interpretation of the law that was rendered recently besides this change in the, I think, the wording of the bill. But bottom line is, it's going to mean that in order for the Hamlin County to comply with the EPA regulations, that we're going to see an increase in our stormwater user fees. And we've been very good in Hamlin County to try and keep our, they call them EFUs, as low as we possibly can. We're far lower than a lot of jurisdictions around us. So I want to look into this a little bit further and then talk to our representative, see if anybody knows exactly.
Are they diverting the monies to Lake Erie, or are they diverting it to another part of the government altogether?
That's what I don't know for sure. They're talking about, I think, part of the thing behind this is, you know, there was a problem last year with Toledo drinking water near the Blue Green Algae. And so they're talking about diverting money to deal with that. And I guess while the state's got a right to do that, same time it is always, you know, taking money out of the local governments to do something else that, you know, quite frankly, looks like it might be more of a state responsibility.
Yeah, well, I just, as I look at this letter as well as thinking about what you're saying, Joe, it appears to me that, again, there seems to be an attempt to look at any money from local governments as we try to function, you know, fairly across the state. And yes, Toledo incident was a horrendous incident. And I understand that state emergency was called at that time by the governor because of the algae, the blue green algae. And I understand that the whole process of algae growing and how it seems to stimulate growth in warm weather and also the side effects of contamination means that if an individual drinks the water or, you know, sucks in the water, that they will have, they have permanent liver damage. I understand all that. But I don't think it's fair to penalize the whole state for one incident out there. And I agree with you. I think it should be something that the state looks at from an individual basis versus taking the money and pulling money out of the other, you know, counties, you know, to take care of their stormwater issues.
Well, they, I think that's right. It's just got another way of saying we're going to throw another tax burden on the citizens. So let's try and find out, you know, I think as a board, we probably ought to go on record as opposing him, and I don't know if it'll do any difference. But I think we, let me find out some more and come back to it. So I don't know what to, also try and find out the timing. I think we ought to send a letter.
I agree with you on that.
Right.
It's not fair to deal with it.
Right. Because, you know, warm weather's going to be approaching soon. And I think there's more to it than what we know. And if we could do some more research just to find out what all was involved, then that would be a better format of process for us to send out a letter. I understand what the consequences can be.
Sounds good.
You want us to schedule that for the, for people?
Yes. Yeah, let's put it on the agenda by then.
We'll come back.
Yeah.
All right. The next item I have, we have our 2015-16 property liability insurance renewal towards where we've been with the Ohio plan for probably an excess of 20 years and a few outstanding coverage as a result of that. The renewal that we have expiring totally in the new proposal rate is around a $2,000 increase. In reality, there's probably a chance that's actually a decrease because of coverages and increase, in other words, the amount of, what the coverages that we were ensuring in 2014-15 is significantly less dollar wise than we are in this new proposal. Doing some vehicles, doing some repairs, vouchers on properties and things of that nature. My concern right now is that, well, not concerned, but normally on the schedule list for our regular meeting, I want to deal with this and seek the board's authorization to enter into this agreement and this renewal. Still working with our agent to maybe issue a little bit on that pricing and questioning and get some final numbers in. So there's a good chance it might actually go down. I guess what I'm asking for the board's authorization is to do it at this amount, but as we still finalize, it may be even a little less than that as we look at the final matters.
What time do we have to work on that?
Well, it's got to be no matter what, so before the next meeting, so that's why I'm looking for the board action. You're seeing the worst case scenario is what I'm saying. It won't be better than this. And really, this is almost, pretty much a flat renewal. The fact is, like I said, as you look at the difference in coverages, it's actually a good option.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very good price. I'm not questioning that. It's just that finalizing some of those numbers.
And finally, recently, it built higher to come back.
Yeah. Just looking for a motion of authorization to go ahead and renew our 2015-16 property liability.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is to seek authorization from the board to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property. This will be real property at 714 North Ben Road. Several, probably a month or so ago, we approached by a property owner that's in possession. This is about roughly 3.3 acres in total. It's actually three acres, 714 is kind of middle. It's actually 712, 714, 718, three different parcels, total of about 3.4 acres. This property was offered to us under the current property owners. If we had interest. I think the key piece the board understands is this is contiguous property to the 50 acres that we own, the property as generally known as the nursery property and then the former stocker property that takes us out a little bit. It's extremely strategic to us for reasons that attaches to the rest of the property that we're just on the developer agreement on. It also has roughly 160, 170 foot frontage on North Ben Road. And the existing frontage that we have on North Ben Road, number one, it's not a lot. I'm trying to think. It's probably 100, 120 foot, 20 something in that ballpark. It's kind of right on the curve. So from a site distance standpoint, assuming that someday we may have future access to them coming out there, probably wouldn't be ideal. This property sits adjacent to the west. And so it's going to give us some greater flexibility from a safety point if that road ever does come out in this area. So while there's other properties we're probably going to have interest in and get down the road, this one, I think, is very, very critical and strategic to us. The other issue is that this property is also contiguous directly to the west of property owned by the city of Cincinnati. And this is about 10 acres that the city of Cincinnati has retained. When we purchased the nursery property, it was 10 acres that the city went and went on to that they currently have some greenhouses and some buildings. About five of that doesn't have anything on it. It's just green space. And we had persuaded refusal on that property. That's something we negotiated back in 1999. We, you know, originally with the original agreement, purchase of order. So all story short, very critical piece, I think. We're hopeful that this will be something that will be turned over very, very quickly in getting back to the development of that property. Like I said, we just entered into that agreement. But looking for authority from the board to go ahead and authorize the sale. Our liability area is that agreement to purchase that property at 712, 714, 718, North Ben Road. And we have, you know, this is kind of a standard purchase agreement that we already drafted with all the various contingencies and inspections and so forth. We'll do a tire service, you know, regular inspection, and bar miles and all those kinds of things before we actually get too close. It gives us sort of 30 days of due diligence.
No, it sounds like an opportunity, you know, as we spoke in our stated township. I'm looking at, you know, developing property for nursery initially and since then, I'm giving individuals say, you know, we want to be the first one to learn to develop and move. And so if it can enhance that development and attract more residents into the township, that would be an asset. So I think it would be a smart thing for us to pull that.
Yeah, five years ago, I probably would have said this might have been an missed opportunity financially. Well, financially, we're still not in tremendous shape to be able to do it. But the likelihood that we had signed for developer agreement, we got certainly a lot more probability of this property that should be being developed. Developed and us ultimately not owning it, not looking at owning this property in the long term is basically a great disadvantage. So it gives us a disadvantage advantage. And there's a greater probability of leaving, use the word flip, that should be, we sell this property.
Well, I know now that those properties make the whole property more better. Way more better.
Question, those some on North Ben Road, now you have 270 footer, you know, for a frontage. Instead of just a road leading back, you actually build something to attract people back.
I think it's an opportunity we should continue to look at and move forward.
I make the motion to authorize the administrator to sign the contract for the purchase of the property.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We have a whole lot of discussion. I just feel over here, we did meet today with county engineer Ted Hubbard and also Eric Beck in the county engineer's office. And Chris Murrins, he's available to pin in if you need to sit in, so I'll jump in here any time. We had a number of issues that we wanted to go over with the county engineer. One, of course, first dealt with, you know, the condition of county roads in the township when it snowed a little and it was sort of displeasure with some of the condition. There's, of course, no emergencies specifically on Ben Road. A lot of that centers on the fact that the county mixes, they're still, they don't use 100% of salt. They use, in some cases, two-thirds grit, and one-third salt, in some cases, two-thirds salt, one-third grit, depending on what time of the season it was.
Yeah, there's sometimes they use 90% grit.
Sure seems, it seems that way, but, you know, Ted was pretty animated about his frustration and that he didn't really have a lot of choice because he didn't have salt. He couldn't get it last year. They waited until late in the season thinking the price would be better from that standpoint. He just had a lot of difficulty obtaining it. So he was sort of left with no choice. He understands people don't like grit. He doesn't like using it, but it was sort of, you know, no other choice. He couldn't do anything. He couldn't do nothing. And I understand that. I mean, the bidding process can be frustrating. We try to encourage him as much as possible to do what we do here for ODOT. We've had a great success in that the last 23 years. And I don't know why they would do that now, but even we know that when we go with ODOT, we don't know what the price is going to be. And you have to commit to your purposes before you know the price. So, you know, it's a gamble, which you pretty much have to do that with all of the, the bigger bidding things. When you're in the business of having to take care of roads, that's kind of what you have to do. You're going to speed them up, and we've got a lot to do for salt.
Well, the other problem is, he tried to buy 10,000 tons after he realized how short he was going to be. And even at $140 a ton, they ended up never delivering. And when he said, where's my salt? They said, we don't have any, so we can't do that. But I don't like the fact that no matter what, they're always going to use grit. So I think they're always going to see a third grit in what they're, they're not going to use.
That's not what he said.
Yeah. He, yeah, he said, you know, without knowing what they're going to do this year, he's sort of focused on secondary problems, which is what's left over. We read that they've thrown, which is all of the sidewalks. I disagree with that. And, you know, I mean, he made it very clear that county sidewalks, sidewalks are not his responsibility. Doesn't mean he owns the sidewalk. Despite the fact that it's in his right of way and that he's constitutionally prohibited from doing anything in that sidewalk.
State constitution.
Which...
He's going to put it there.
Well, and I think he's saying that he has a, there's a road and bridge fund restriction that does not allow him to do anything on sidewalks.
That's their legal advice opinion, that they cannot. And I think it adds more to do with, once you get started in that direction and the county decides, you could deal with one of the problems on sidewalks. That's my guess.
Do you think sidewalks on Lincoln Road, or where they have sidewalks?
He said, the road and bridge fund will not allow him. His, the legal opinion he's got is that he is not allowed to do anything on the sidewalk. He can't use road and bridge when he does sidewalk.
Even on his county roads?
Yeah.
That just doesn't seem...
Anyway, I tend to believe that it's probably more, again, this is just my opinion, of, well, we have the same restrictions and, you know, generally we have road and bridge fund too, as restrictions of all doing things specifically on sidewalks, on road and bridge. I think the question might be, is he required?
No.
Is he prohibited?
He's definitely not required.
He's definitely not required, but they're just saying you're not required to maintain them, or are you actually prohibited? And I disagree that those are owned by the, by the property owners, who those sidewalks are in front of. This has always been an issue even on township roads, where they don't own that sidewalk. But yes, in most jurisdictions, if that sidewalk needs to be replaced or has a block that has a deviation, a one or two inch deviation, you can charge that homeowner to fix it.
Right.
And that's sort of one of those quirks in the law that, yes, you know, that's what we've had many times. And she says, yeah, it doesn't follow sort of logical progression that just because they can make you fix it, you know, responsibility, but it doesn't mean it's yours. And so, but be that as it may, I will agree, that is a very nebulous area of law. And it's always been something that's confused me. It's always a difficult conversation to handle with property owners. You know, in the township, we fix them. But in the past, and many, many years ago, we recessed and we ran it and planned. I keep saying to Ted, but you're the one out inspecting them and telling that homeowner they have to fix it because it is under your, under your permit. It is under your jurisdiction. You might have the means to be able to make that person clean. So he may be right, but nevertheless, we didn't settle that issue. So if we want to clean the grit on those sidewalks, it's going to be clearly our responsibility. Now, what we did talk about, about cleaning conclusions is we're going to continue to be, we're going to look at ways in which the township and the county can cooperate in ways that are mutually beneficial in the future to deal with this problem. So we don't keep repeating this year and year and year out and having the grit because, you know, that's an advantage for them not to have grit too, because they're going to go out and sweep the streets. Here in the next two, probably next month or so, they're going to be sweeping the grid out of the streets.
Well, my herd's going into sewers. That stuff doesn't look long.
Not all of it. If you look at that curb, there is a...
Oh, I know. I watch the sidewalks. It's dangerous. But at least many, a lot of the nights they go in the sewers. And it is dangerous.
And that's a terrible place for it.
No, that's...
That's a terrible place for it. So they're, they are going to sweep it.
He said, next year, we're still use grit.
Well, his point is, at the beginning of the year, he's going to use grit. Depending on how much salt they use, he hopes to use less and less as the year goes on. But he can't afford to use straight salt in November, and then we get hit again. And he's out of salt.
Well, that's what they always used to use.
Well, but he ran out January 10th.
This, this concern is, if I get salt, if I can get it, you know, like Cora said, what he's claiming is he had a contract for 10,000 tons.
And went to look.
And he didn't get it.
Right.
He said, what are you supposed to do? I mean, he just said, we don't have it, so we can't get it to you. You know, and I get that. I mean, that happened in a lot of jurisdictions, not just the county engineer.
Right.
And, you know, maybe it'll happen to us this year, hopefully tomorrow. I'm just, Ted, I don't wonder if they're going to make it. But I've had a great success with them the last two or three years. And if we can get it, maybe that's a bad example to try. And you know, we can give it. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Who wasn't prepared to do that, he saw it's green?
Green supposedly didn't get any. Or they, they ended up getting it, they didn't get the rest.
They had a, on the road, it was a river. And they had to send, I don't know how many times that truck came and they were left.
So even if he gets the salt that he needs, and he, is he still going to dilute the salt?
I think he's going to, when he is to pay the price. I mean, if the salt comes in at $150 a ton or $120 a ton, yeah. I don't think it's going to be down, but that's what they're going to do.
So if he pays $40 a ton again, then yeah.
$40, that's not much.
We can talk.
We heard it like that long ago.
I know.
Five years ago, this was the out.
Right.
It's been flushly based on where it has been. Ted will be at two of the worst ones ever.
We just had a bad winter.
Yeah, it's going to be in front of, we're estimating, you know, what we're going to do, we've estimated we're going to purchase 3,000 plus tons at roughly $100 a ton. That's what we're budgeting. It's cheaper, great. We won't spend that amount of money, but we're going to take care of those, which is, I think, is our responsibility. But he says they've got to buy 26,000 tons. And A, he can get it delivered. And so I think that's what I'm saying.
Well, the worst problem is Ted, 99, is we broke houses, we do, we're probably 500. So even if they got 26,000 tons, you know, they still don't get it.
But I think it's worth it. He's had five times the budget, five times.
I think we're getting through all this.
The bottom line is that, you know, we're going to have to clean sidewalks if we want to. And two, we're still working with him on trying to help us solution for that. And exactly what that looks like, I think, we share around, so maybe we do some things. I'm not crazy about that idea for a whole bunch of reasons, but it's better than marrying grit from every single year, in Win Road, beating the street that looks like it's rarely touched.
The problem is, the problem is, we can't, they can't send a truck out on Win Road. Like if we gave them the salt, they can't send a truck out on Win Road and drop just salt. Because all their trucks have all that grit in there, and they're not going to drive out, do the mileage of Win Road, and then head back to the farm and refill with the grit filled with salt. You know what I mean? So that logistic we have works over time. But a different solution that will make Win Road at least get salted. And because the grit, you know, that's obviously where it lists the worst because of the falls, giant sidewalks, and how they reheat the road.
Now, we're going to have to do this, clean the sidewalks.
Well, we don't have to. It's not our responsibility. If we don't clean, you know what else we're going to do?
Or Winston Road.
He's going to have to.
It's not bad. It's not even, like, you should not even say.
It's not safe by law. I was like, Jesus, that was my question to Ted, is that, Ted, use through the grit. This isn't a natural event. This isn't rain, or ice, or snow. Use through it. And if someone is injured, how is that not your liability? And how do you think you don't have a responsibility to clean up and control it? And you say, I don't have legal means to clean it up because I'm not going to use any of my funds. I'm restricted from spending any of that on sidewalks. Which, you know, maybe he's right.
I've had before, you know, you said it could be broken. I think you could use general phone.
He doesn't get it.
Oh, that's only...
That's the county giving money.
Right.
Well, my concern is, do we, I thought our equipment was broken. How are we going to?
Does Winston Street's sidewalks get the street sweeper?
Right, right. So I'm talking about...
We would sweep the sidewalk in the street before they, sometime before they bring the machines in.
Any hard, just to run a building over and pick it up?
I think that's what I guess.
You run the building, see guys walk side by side. You can do the whole sidewalk.
But then you need to wait till they're done. Because there's tons sweeping, a lot of the doors on the sidewalks.
That's true.
Really? You got grass between a lot of spots where the, you could sweep the street. So as we're going...
And cars are going to push it back up onto the sidewalk anyway.
As we're going forward, looking for a way to solve this for next year, I think we need to differentiate between Win Road, where we don't want the grit. There are some county roads that quite frankly, if they threw grit, it would be, you know...
That's what you're going to do.
It goes in the grass, like there's, you know, roads that just have ditches on either side. There's no sidewalks, anything. Who cares?
In the business district.
In the business district, if you don't...
Downhill is a critical area.
Yeah, I think that's, and that's what we're calling, you have majority of traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic. It affects the businesses, it affects every other, they say, it's unsanitary. I mean, it's, you've seen it. It's an issue there in some areas.
So we're just talking about most likely from North Ben Road down to Flunner.
No, Flunner, yeah. That's, I think, the Flunner area that we're focusing on.
Okay. But, you know, but I thought that there was concerns, some of the concerns came from the, that was the snow.
Why don't we find out what the solution is?
Yeah, I think...
Yes, and we don't want to have another, you know, two miles. Right. The good thing of the meeting is, you know, we did, we did try to figure out so Ted's very, you know, all that, they're going to look at some things, we're going to look at some things, we're going to meet again, and keep, you know, we're going to fix it. We have to come up with a solution so that we don't keep repeating this. You know, we had the one year where we did let them pay salt out of our bin. It's an idea that that would be used exclusively on Win. It didn't happen. They still threw grit on Win, and they used our salt on other streets. And so it didn't work. And the reason is because they don't care. A truck that just does Win, that truck continues, you know, they do what happened. And, you know, I understand that. We get the same issue. So we're going to work out something and come back ultimately with what that is in the short term. We've also come up with some ideas of how to... some ideas of how to move grit on and out. It'll look long term for some of this.
I think he's staying on top of that.
See, Ted definitely had this problem, and he does want to try to figure out between a solution that will work, so that it's okay with him and we're happy.
Another same business, so we want to, we're gonna figure out how to, how to solve. So, that's the update on that. The only other thing I go ahead and even just, I mean, some updates, we are looking at our personnel policies, something we do, we're going to go through. With, with the fire department going through a pretty extensive, both policy and procedure manual, and using the Lexapro product that they have, the system and that, and, you know, there's some, there's some pretty good policies that have been crossed at Lexapro that we've made or incorporated ours. I don't wanna do it piecemeal, so we'll do this comprehensively. So in the coming months, it'll probably be two months or so, we'll be coming in with separate changes. These aren't so much changes to existing, but adding some things to a little handle policy along that has become an issue just because of changing tops and things that need to be addressed, so we'll be doing that. One thing, you'll see this in our upcoming public hearing, pre-developed block grant funding, we got some good news, we got an additional $25,000 awarded to the township for the purchase and installation playground equipment, the frost, on the former Frost property. And this is something we originally put in our application, did get funded initially, but apparently they had some residual funds, and this then did be, did give it more, so that's good news.
That's very good news.
And then the last thing is, unfortunately, we're continuing to see some vandalism up in Clifford George Park, because of the farms, the latest was a pretty much shoot off everything found on the side of that concession stand building. That concession stand building has had a lot of vandalism. We did catch the kids that did it the first time around, so we'll be, you know, hopefully the park is successful again, but it's, it's, it was a problem property across the street, they have a lot of kids in apartments, and that's where the last one came from, guessing is probably was, was one of them, again, a different set of kids. But I think we're at a point where, you know, this happens again, we'll probably, we'll probably have to replace it, and it's just a, too expensive of an item, and it's too easy of a target.
But we have to replace it.
We have to replace it.
Because I thought I had seen that.
It's, it's...
That was a good...
And you penalize the neighborhood, and it moves the park, but at the same time, at some point, you can't just spend money, you know, just trips over your...
Mike, is that very a bit, uh...
It is, it is, I mean, it's not until it's right on the road.
Right, there is.
That concession stand that everything found is actually on John Gray side of the road, so it's right there, so we're gonna go online.
I would guess that those incidents occurred during the daytime there, most likely the late at night, or sun goes down.
Really, that's all the answer to the concession.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn from our work session.
So, director? Um, all is in paper?
Aye.
Work session is determined.